The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order because the mayor's running late. So we'll get started. We have a prize for the pledge of allegiance. Have a roll call, Markey.
Sure. Councilor John Chris Dustin?
President.
Councilor Danielle?
Here.
Councilor Giannoni?
Here.
Mayor Prinsky?
Councilor Luddy?
Here.
Councilor Tagliero?
Here.
Councilor Russell?
Here.
Kathy May, you have one.
Okay. Someone's lost. Hello, everybody. Now we'll have the audience of citizens if everybody would wish to speak. If there's anybody here, I'll read your name. Up here first is Jan Zagorski.
I think she said it right. Jan Zagorski, 63 Grandview Avenue, please. Although I don't attend many town council meetings, I believe that I stay active in what many of the boards and commissions are doing. I thank whoever started the online email agendas because some of us, maybe a few of us, do read them on a regular basis. I attend almost all Board of Ed meetings and I'm a member of the Youth Advisory Council, as well as a teacher and a coach in town. I found it helpful to receive those agendas and this one was very interesting to me. I would like to make a comment on item 10 under the new business. This is our first budget season with the new Board of Finance. My opinion is that this board has worked hard to bring forward a budget that will support our town and our services. They've worked with the many departments and although it passed, it will bring an increase in taxes, we cannot allow our community to keep falling behind in its many needs. At the presentation of the budget, both the Board of Ed and the Board of Finance presented their budgets thoroughly. There were a few questions from citizens, I believe three, Mr. Pasquett, which were answered and responded to timely. I am hopeful that the town council moves this budget forward for a townwide vote without changing or rejecting the budget, as item 10 says it is a possibility of doing. If this happens, I'm curious as to why it was so important to add this board to our charter. This group put in many hours, working with many different groups. If the council makes changes tonight, I feel it's a slap in the face to those who have worked tirelessly to present this budget. Let the budget put forward go to a vote to the townspeople. If the council makes changes tonight, the message I will take away is that the council alone wants to determine what is best for our town. That you don't want the entire taxpayer base to determine the budget. If the budget goes down in referendum, then it would be the time for the council to work with the Board of Finance to make those changes, not prior to the vote. The council trusted the members enough to place them on the board. I hope the council trusts those of us who vote to make the final decision on that budget brought forward by the Board of Finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan.
Thank you, Jan.
Is there anybody else?
Anne Riley, 153 Stillmetal Lane, Berlin. The proposed mill rate increase of 1.67 mills is too large. With the state of Connecticut in crisis mode and no incentive and end in sight for years and years to come, our town must do everything it can to economize. I know it's a difficult job, but with our state devastated by the increased spending, low bond rating, and increased taxes, followed by our recent reevaluation, this isn't going to cause a great burden for our community. Berlin cannot follow the same route as our state and expect favorable results in economic growth. Our town has had a number of new companies called Berlin Home the last few years. Businesses want to see a low and stable mill rate in order to consider moving into town and staying into town. Looking at other towns regionally around this area, once again, Farmington has the lowest tax increase in the area of about 3.5 percent. They have great schools, great community, town services, and student achievements. What do they do different? You know, I don't know. I'm just thinking, maybe it's something that we should investigate. A few thoughts to consider. For years, our town has had multiple technology departments, payroll, and finance. We should consider merging that. I understand it would mean the Board of Ed and the town departments to come together, but it will result in real cost savings. It's time to give up the feeling that the town and the Board of Ed are separate. It's necessary to work together to provide real solutions to our spending issues, like Plainville and other towns have done. Although every department has projects that wishes to continue or develop, and they have provided a wish list of capital cost expenditures, it would be wise for town council managers to scale back whenever possible, since our debt load from prior bonding is still increasing over the next couple of years. Our recent downgrade by Moody's increases our cost of borrowing money and hurts our ability to attract businesses to town. We also may have two more police pension buyout options exercised this coming year, which is a payout of well over $1 million. That's a lot for the town to absorb. I urge the Berlin Town Council to closely review the Finance Committee budget presented and find ways to cut the budget and lessen the burden on the taxpayers and businesses. Given so much uncertainty within our own budget and finances, the state's already saying that they're in the red this year, it would be very wise not to overspend and to try to find where we can make savings or wait to purchase something. Adopting a Finance Committee mill rate increase of 1.67 is unwise. Reductions are needed, warranted, and should be demanded by our taxpayers, residents, and businesses. We do not want to, I'm sorry, we do not want to be taxing ourselves out of the marketplace. With the recent reevaluation, businesses have seen increases of over 20 percent. Homeowners are looking at some tax increases, in some cases of almost 10 percent. We must remain competitive to bring in people to want to reside in our town and want to do business in our town. The time for change is now, and I know it's going to be tough, but I hope you guys will seriously take this under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else looking around here on this side?
John O'Brien, Vineyard Drive, 40-year resident at Berlin. No one likes to see taxes going up. I know I'm one of them. All my children went to the Berlin school system. My grandchildren go, they enjoy the school system. You can't keep on kicking can down the road. Our infrastructure is a mess. Taxes, if they have to go up, we have police department, we have town employees, union contracts, wages go up and everything. Like Anne said and everything, again, no one likes taxes going up. But there's a lot of people in this town that owe back taxes. There's one person that's, one of her political advisors, where she owes probably by three brand-new police cruisers, but she hides behind Anne Riley and the Republican Town Committee. She's a donor also to the Republicans, every campaign and everything. Go after people like her, they owe back taxes, and maybe we wouldn't have to worry about taxes going up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Over here in the middle.
Good evening. Richard Pasquett, Elwood Road. A little over a year ago, I was part of an active group that campaigned against some of the proposed charter changes. Fortunately, we were successful, especially with the Board of Ed issue, but on some of the issues, we were not successful. I personally and our group campaigned against the formation of a Board of Finance. However, in retrospect and looking back at what the Board of Finance has done this year, I need to commend them. I need to commend the six people that served on that board, three Republicans, three Democrats, I believe, for doing what's best for this community. They adjusted for shortfalls in the state revenue. They looked at the needs of Berlin and tried to keep the services that we currently have in place. They funded the Board of Education. They funded the town side. And to echo what a previous speaker said, they looked at our capital needs, and I was going to use the line of kicking the can, but I won't. Instead of putting off dump trucks that we end up having to buy in an emergency situation, they're funding dump trucks. We need to fund capital. So I need to commend them for a fine job. I was pleasantly surprised, and since the voters have voted for this, I was glad to see how well they worked together. Finally, I wasn't going to say this, but a previous speaker mentioned something about the Farmington schools being great, and I don't doubt that. But in reality, you cannot compare Berlin schools with Farmington because Berlin is not Farmington. As a matter of fact, the state of Connecticut classifies schools according to social and economic conditions, wealth ranking, ability to pay, education status, and they're called district reference groups. Berlin is not in the district reference group that Farmington is. We're not in the group that Avon is. We're not in the group that Greenwich is in. We're in the group Rocky Hill, Weathersfield, Newington, comparable communities that we should compare ourselves to, and we do well compared to those towns. But the one thing that we don't do well in, and I've been harping on this for as long as I've been superintendent and then since retired, is how we support our schools. Our per pupil spending is in the bottom third of the state of Connecticut, and it's been like that for 30 years. Wealth ranking is at the bottom of the top third of Connecticut towns. Wealth ranking is up there. Per pupil spending is down here, and no one gets excited about that. Farmington has great schools. They don't have the disparity in wealth ranking compared to per pupil spending. At one time when I was superintendent, I believe we were $992 below the state average per youngster. Does that sound like a lot? That's every year we spent $992 less per youngster than the average community. But would 3,200 youngsters multiply 3,200 times 992? That's how much we underspent each Connecticut district in a year, in excess of $3 million. Do you know how many pairs of hands that $3 million would have bought? So we're not Farmington. This is Berlin, and let's keep Berlin to be a good community, which it has been for many, many years. And congratulations to the Board of Finance, all six members. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the next item is the consent agenda. You all took a look at those? If there's any questions, want to break something out, otherwise I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda, items one through three as written.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I?
Stain?
No, I don't want to stand.
That's okay.
I want to have a discussion. Can we have a discussion or is it too late?
We all voted.
The consent agenda?
Yeah.
We voted.
That should have been removed.
Yep.
Okay. That is what it is.
Okay. Okay, the motion's accepted. So we'll move on to the new business, topic number one.
Jan, do we put this on?
First, I want to add the other one.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to add an agenda item to our list here tonight?
Make a motion to add an agenda item to number 11?
And that would be for the authorization of the acting town manager?
Yes.
To subordinate the town's mortgage with respect to 945 Farmington Avenue?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Jack?
Okay.
Go on to number one, please.
Item number one is the donation of golf rounds and carts for Hubbard Elementary School annual dinner and raffle fundraiser, and John Zuck is here to discuss the donation.
Okay, he's standing, we'll let him speak.
This is a donation to Hubbard Elementary School through the Parent Teacher Organization. It's a donation of a round of golf for four and two carts for their pasta supper, which will be on April 5, 2018. The value of donation is $236.
Okay. And we've done this before, right?
Yes.
Also, the schools have done this.
Yes, correct.
So we've approved them all. Any questions? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Move to approve a donation for a round of golf for four and two golf carts at Timberland Golf Course to be used as a raffle prize for the Richard D. Hubbard Elementary School annual dinner and raffle fundraiser to be held on Thursday, April 5, 2018. Total donation value of $236.
Second.
Okay. You have a motion and a second. I'll approve.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry. Okay.
Okay. Agenda item number two?
Yes.
Again, John, this is for John. The Golf Commission is recommending to institute another category for passes. This one would be for adults with restricted access. John is here to elaborate on the need for the new pass.
Currently, Timberland does not have a, excuse me, a restricted-use pass for adults from the ages of 18 to 62 in the non-resident and resident category. We do have a restricted-use pass for juniors and seniors. So the Golf Commission, and we felt that this could help generate more revenue, attract more golfers to Timberland, and get some of these golfers to commit to playing Timberland more often than just coming in to play on a daily fee basis. So having them commit through a season pass, we felt that this might be advantageous to Timberland.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Zuck? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Move to approve a new adult restricted pass for players age 18 to age 62, or full-time college students up to age 22. The season pass rate will be for a resident $715 and for a non-resident $1,450. This provides unlimited weekday play, unlimited weekend and holiday play, with start times beginning after 1:00 P.M.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number three is a request to authorize the town, acting town manager to sign an EPA Brownfields grant for 889 Farmington Avenue, which was, is being obtained through the Capital Region Council of Governments, and appropriate those monies for that activity. Chris Edge is here to discuss the signing.
Thank you, Jack. This was the grant we had put forward with Capital Region Council of Governments. We had gotten an approval for the grant, basically for us to, them to go to the EPA for the monies. This is a $200,000 grant for hydraulic control system on the edge of 889 so that contamination does not go off-site. This is purely the grant portion of $200,000. This is the entire part that you're approving tonight for Jack to sign the paperwork with Corporation Council's assistance. When the next piece comes through with the $100,000, we'll bring it back to you, but right now, this is just a $200,000 grant that we're getting from EPA through the CROG, and we're excited about it. It's going to help us with our process there at 889.
Okay. Excellent. Any questions for Chris? The only thing I can think of, Chris, we had proposals or cost estimates a while back. Would this help reduce some of those costs that we had seen in the past?
It will. The cost we had was about $300,000, and we still have monies in place, so this will give us some flexibility as well with what we'd like to do because, again, as we're looking at some of the proposals, as well as looking at a couple of different options, including the purchase of 861, it gives us a little more flexibility with a couple more dollars to work with.
Good. Okay, if there's no questions, I'll take a motion.
Move to authorize the acting town manager to sign the EPA Brownfields subgrant through the Capital Region Council of Governments and to appropriate the $200,000 to revenue account, state and federal grants, and expenditure account EPA CR COG, environmental remediation grant, subject to review and approval by Corporation Council.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any no's or abstentions? No? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four is to award the contract for miscellaneous concrete sidewalks. Annually, we bid out the work to fix or build new sidewalks in town. That bid was opened on March 22. The low bidder is TNS Caminito of Middletown, and so we are recommending that we go with their bid.
Okay.
I have a question. Are you concerned that they came in so much lower?
I would be, other than they're the ones who have done the work probably for, I've been here three years, and they've done the work every year, and they do excellent work for us.
I agree.
I would be normally, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll have to agree with that, Jack. I've watched them do my neighborhood and neighborhoods around me in the last couple of years, and they did good work and cleaned up after themselves, and I don't know if you heard any complaints, but you're saying they did a good job.
I, about their work, we've never received any, not that I remember getting any complaints about them.
Okay, good.
We'll move on here.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
Move to award contract number 2018-17 miscellaneous concrete sidewalks to TNS Caminito Concrete LLC of Middletown that will allow for concrete sidewalk construction throughout the town by various town departments, including the Board of Education, through established unit prices. Funding will come from the established line item accounts within the fiscal year 2017-2018 and 2018-2019 department budgets. The contract will involve work to be performed through December 31, 2018.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or no's? Okay.
Agenda item number five. Annually, we ask you, we look for bids for renting construction equipment. The town doesn't have, you know, all the equipment that we need, nor would we want to buy every piece of equipment that we need. We're able to rent that from local contractors. We went out for a bid this year and only received one bid from earth contractors. We don't assign any one value to that bid because the need for that equipment would come and go as depending on the project, so we're requesting that, an approval of a contract, a equipment rental contract to earth contractors for this year.
Okay, great. I noticed, Jack, in the rates, some of these things comes with the operator, too. It's not like we're renting the equipment and doing the work ourselves.
Right. Sometimes, you know, if you don't have the right operator.
License.
Yeah.
Okay.
Want to make sure that we do it right.
Okay. Any questions for Jack? I'll take a motion.
Move to authorize the acting town manager to utilize the attached bid results from earth contractors of Kensington, Connecticut for the equipment rental contract number 2018-16 for various construction-related services as required on an as-needed basis through December 31, 2018.
Okay. You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or no's? Motion passes.
Agenda item number six is for streetlight maintenance services for Tanco Lighting, amendment number one. Tanco Lighting was the firm that won the bid for installing the new LED lights on the streetlights after we purchased them from EverSource. They, as part of that, they had the maintenance contract for the last couple of years. That first part of the contract has come to an end. We were talking to other people, see if we could get someone else interested in bidding on this, and at this point, we haven't been. So Public Works, we decided to request an extension of the contract to December 31 of this year to allow us more time to continue to see if there's other contractors who'd be interested in doing that work. The contract we originally signed with Tanco allows us to, two extensions, so we're exercising one of, we want to exercise one of those. The work that they're doing now is if we get a call, let's say there's a light out or there's a pole bent down, and we now currently own the lights, we can't call EverSource. We have to take care of it ourselves. So we've been working with Tanco on repairing the lights or replacing the poles as the calls come in. Sometimes, the calls come in, and you, as council members, may get calls from people saying, "The light stays out, we're not getting it responded to." It's a two-part process. It may be our responsibility, or it may still be EverSource's responsibility, depending if it's a service problem. And that process is still cumbersome. It's not working as well as we want, and that's one of the reasons we are looking for other contractors who may work better at EverSource. So, but at this point, I'm recommending to the councils that you approve an extension of the contract to December 31.
Do you think it's going to last the three years? Fixing, changing all the lights and getting this under control?
Oh, I think so, yeah. It's improved a lot. It's just, I think part of it is EverSource sells you the lights, and then really, once they sell them, they're not that interested in servicing them anymore. And there is, you know, there is a disconnect there, and we've had several situations where we're contacting EverSource and the response is taking a long time. And, you know, I've actually had residents call and say the EverSource car, truck comes out, looks at the wrong pole, and then leaves. And so we're working on, trying to get all the bugs out of the system. And my thought is, is Tanco is out of California, and what they're doing is subcontracting to a firm in Connecticut. I would prefer if we just contacted directly with a firm in Connecticut.
Sure.
We actually went to EverSource and asked if they were interested in being our contractor since they have that capability. We didn't get a favorable response from them at this point, so we're looking for, we think there are other electrical contractors who may be interested in doing that work for us, so we're still working on that.
Okay, good. Any more questions for Mr. Healy? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Move to authorize the acting town manager to enter into an agreement to extend the existing contract with Tanco Lighting of San Francisco, California, to provide streetlight maintenance services through December 31, 2018.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any no's, nays, or abstentions? No? Okay.
Agenda item number seven is the application for low SIP grant for renovation of the Berlin High Track. I think, as you know, we've been looking at, working on the improvement of the track. It needs work, and so we've looked at different ways of trying to fund that. Janet Cho is here to discuss. We've gone out and obtained bids, one option on repairing the track. As part of the, as part of the funding for that, we're looking at a low SIP grant, and as part of the budget, we've taken that out of the budget and we're saying, we're going to do that with a low SIP grant. If we don't get the grant this year, we'll wait till next year to fund it that way through a grant next year. But anyway, Janet Cho is here to discuss the bidding process.
So it's a very lengthy.
Hello there.
Agenda item, hello. So if you have any questions outside of the actual agenda item, I'm happy to answer. Or I do have my cohort, Stephen Wood, here, who knows more specifics about the details of the actual project. But we did go out to bid. We got three bids back. I gave you the bid results. We're going with the lowest bidder. Cape and Island does track like it's second nature, so they're very well experienced and very highly recommended by numerous other towns.
Okay, I don't have any questions. I do know that track does need work. Been out there watching my son over the last couple of years on the track team, but you're right, we should get it done, if we can get this grant, which would be nice.
Question. So the backside of the track, I actually ran there this weekend, and the backside has a lot of moss and stuff because of the shade cover. Is that addressing it or?
That's even. I don't want to give the wrong information.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it's part of the project.
The current plan is they're going to remove the first half inch all the way around the whole entire track. They're going to first come in, clean all the moss off, put two layers back on top of it, and then on a yearly basis, we're going to treat the moss, go in there, pressure wash it, so we don't have the same problem again.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more questions, I'll take a motion.
Am I reading these four separately or as a whole?
All together.
All together?
You can do that, yeah.
Number one, move to adopt the attached low SIP resolution. Number two, move to authorize the acting town manager to apply for a $200,000 low SIP grant for the renovation of Berlin High School track. Number three, move to authorize the appropriation of $200,000 to the low SIP Berlin High School track resurfacing account. Number four, move to authorize the acting town manager, Jack Healy, to enter into contract with the low bidder, Cape and Island Tennis and Track, contingent upon the approval of the low SIP grant for the renovations at Berlin High School track.
Second.
Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any nays? Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number eight is about emergency responder radio coverage at the Berlin High School. We have requirements to be able to use the radios throughout the schools. We had a study conducted of the schools, and we have found deficiencies at the high school where radio coverage is not complete throughout the entire school. We therefore have a consult, we had an architect come in, look at, draw up some specifications. We've gone out to bid, and we have a bid for improving the communications throughout the school. Doug Soluk is here to discuss what was included in the bid and the results.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Doug, come on up.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Hey, Doug.
So we're putting a few antennas throughout the high school to help the police and the firemen communicate a little bit better.
So there was a lot of dead spots there?
There was a few. Overall, I don't know the percentage, but the majority of the school was compatible compliant. But we did have a few dead spots, which raised the concern.
How about the other schools?
Other schools tested out compliant.
Okay, good. We only had one bidder, huh?
Yeah, we had four interested firms, three radio companies, an electrical contractor. One firm excused themselves due to scheduling, and then the second firm backed out as well before the bids were due, so.
Okay. And this is being put into the upcoming budget, correct?
Yes.
We have to prove it, and it's in the budget. Okay, so any questions for Doug, for anybody? I'll take a motion.
Move to award bid number 2018-20 to Utility Communications of Hampton, Connecticut for emergency responder radio coverage for Berlin High School in the amount of $172,515, including a 10% contingency figure.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any nays? No? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number nine is an action against the manufacturers of prescription opiates...opiates. At the last council meeting, the council, we got into discussion with Corporation Council to investigate the possibility of the town of Berlin participating in a lawsuit with local cities and towns versus the manufacturers. Corporation Council, Jeff Denofia is here to discuss the require...what's involved.
Sure. Right now, there are four lawsuits pending in Connecticut Superior Court against seven pharmaceutical companies that manufacture prescription opiates. One lawsuit has 18 towns as plaintiffs, including a few of my clients. And the other three were filed by individual municipalities. New Haven, New Britain, and Waterbury filed their own cases against the same defendants. So the cases are going to be consolidated. They've been transferred to the complex litigation docket and assigned to Judge McCauser, who sits in Hartford. Lawsuits are very new. They were filed a couple of months ago, early this year. And there was recently a scheduling conference. The defendants plan on filing a motion to dismiss to challenge whether or not the plaintiffs have standing. In terms of the town of Berlin's opportunity to join the litigation, I spoke with plaintiff's counsel representing all the municipalities in the respective cases. And there's no issue in terms of the town of Berlin joining on the same terms that the other municipalities are participating. So that means that the town's obligation would be to provide plaintiff's counsel with information as to the costs that the town has incurred as a result of over-prescription of opioids. That's the extent of the town's obligation. In terms of legal fees, we have a proposed contingent fee agreement from plaintiff's counsel that's in your agenda packets. So the town would have no obligation to pay any fees or costs unless there's a recovery. My caution to you in terms of...I recommend that the town sign the fee agreement and participate as a plaintiff in the litigation, but it's going to be a long haul. The deadline for the defendants to file their motion to dismiss is the middle of May. The deadline for the plaintiffs to file their response is the middle of June. And then the defendants have an opportunity to reply, and then there will be oral argument. And then the court has, by law, up to four months to enter a decision on the motion to dismiss. In the meantime, nothing happens in the case. All the other deadlines in the case are stayed. So we won't know until later this year, possibly in the fourth quarter of the year, whether or not the case is even going to proceed. There is some national opiate litigation that's going on in federal court in Ohio, and they're off to the races in that litigation. And there's discovery that if the motion to dismiss is denied and the case proceeds on its merits, there is discovery that presumably the plaintiff municipalities in Connecticut would be able to access. So that would be very helpful. It's the same seven pharmaceutical companies in the various litigation. And there's also a couple of physicians that have been named in the Connecticut cases as well for over-prescription of opioids. So, you know, there's really no disadvantage to the town of Berlin joining the litigation. As I said, it's in its infancy, and there's no...under no circumstances would there be any fees payable to plaintiff's counsel unless the town recovers monies. Now, there is a rule of professional conduct in Connecticut that requires that the client be ultimately responsible for costs. So in the event that there are, you know, if there's a nominal settlement or relatively small judgment or verdict, those costs would get paid first. So, and again, we would be plaintiff number 19, really plaintiff number 23. So, you know, by the time this litigation really heats up and the motions to dismiss are adjudicated, I expect more municipalities will join. So the reason for the caution is don't spend the money yet. Don't plan on any significant recovery. We don't even know, as we sit here, what costs the town will be able to document in terms of costs incurred specifically by the town of Berlin as a result of over-prescription of opioids.
That was actually my question. Like, what are damages? What do they consider costs?
Well, it's incumbent upon the town. If the town wants to participate as a plaintiff, then the town has a burden of proof. And we'll have to figure out who the best people are to gather that data and provide it to plaintiff's counsel. All the towns are in the same boat. Some of the larger municipalities that have more human resources than some of the smaller municipalities obviously are able to gather the data with more ease and greater facility than some of the smaller towns. But it's information that we'd have to provide to be able to have a viable case.
And that's all part of the discovery process, or...?
The plaintiff's counsel really need the information sooner rather than later because in order for them to determine, as indicated in the fee agreement, in order for them to determine whether or not the town of Berlin has a viable cause of action, they need to understand what we have in terms of substantiation for our claims. So even though we're one of...it's not a class action. Where a class plaintiff takes the laboring or in the litigation, each municipality has to stand on its own claim and support the merits of its own claim. But by entering into the fee agreement that's on the agenda tonight, again, there's no financial exposure to the town, and at least we have the opportunity to investigate the viability of the claims. And if it turns out that the documentation supports participation in the litigation, then the town is protected.
I know that...I thought I read an article in the paper that said Berlin's had a dramatic increase in the opioid cases, whether they were fatalities or... So I wonder if that was the information we could get through, you know, calls from the police department and...
Yeah, I mean, keep in mind, the crux of the action, the litigation, has to do with the over-prescription of opioids. So, you know, there's going to have to be some...
So you don't...
...missible evidence to support that an individual case was caused by an over-prescription.
As opposed to illegal or illicit narcotics, correct?
Right.
Gotcha.
So you don't see any downside to joining the lawsuit?
No, there's really no downside to it. Like I said, there's no financial exposure. There's some work that has to be done by town staff. But I think it's worth doing the diligence and seeing whether or not there's a viable claim there.
Any more questions for Attorney Denofia or Jack? Okay. We'll take a motion.
Move to authorize Jack Healy, acting town manager, execute the proposed retainer agreement and engage the law firms of Drubner, Hartley &amp; Hellman LLC, and Hurwitz, Sagaran, Schlossberg, and Nuff LLC, and Simmons, Hanley, Conroy LLC to investigate the viability of, and if appropriate prosecute, an action against the manufacturers of prescription opiates for damages to the town of Berlin.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Jack, if you need help doing any of that digging to make sure that it's the right medications and things like that, I'm a pharmacist, so I could help you figure out what your causative product was.
We appreciate any help. Okay. Yes, we're onto number 11.
Okay.
Okay. Number 10 is the Board of Finance has recommended 2018-2019 general budget. It's time for, you know, we want the town to present the budget... Well, the Board of Finance to present the budget to the town council. Kevin Delaney is here to go over the budget. The Board of...there are several members of the Board of Finance...oh, Jerry? I'm sorry. Jerry...Jerry's here to go over the budget. So this is their presentation to you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me just make a couple of comments. I'm not here to present the entire budget to you, although we are turning the budget over to you. As you know, this is the first budget that was put together with the new Board of Finance under our revised charter. Board of Finance has a number of talented people. We have business people and finance people that worked very hard to put this budget together. We had a great amount of cooperation between everybody. I don't think, if I was looking back on it last November, that I would have ever thought that three Republicans, two Democrats, and an independent would get along and come up with a budget as we did. We went through a number of votes, probably over 20, 25 votes on individual items of deductions and additions, and every one of our votes was a unanimous vote. So I think our group worked very well together. We had a lot of things in mind. Some of the things...one of our priorities was that we wanted to put together what we determined to be a sustainable budget, something that we could start with this year and move forward with. We also addressed the priorities that the council mentioned to us at our joint meeting. There were a number of different areas that you did point out to us. Our aim was to keep taxes as low as possible while maintaining essential services and to begin to catch up on capital expenditures. We don't want to have to be in the position of reacting to capital equipment failures. We want to be taking a look to the future. That future look, on our perspective, was looking out five, 10 years at what the needs of the town are. We want to be investing in the town when people want to look to come to Berlin among...with our capital, as well as how we're running our town, our boards of education, and our parks, such as the golf course. Our process involved many meetings with the town manager, the finance director, the department heads, and also included public input. I thank all of those who participated in the process for their input. We have a lot of good professionals working for us that we relied on in developing different parts of the budget, especially the capital budget. We did review the operating budget line by line and the capital budget item by item. So it was a very detailed look at the budget. We did have some challenges, as has been noted before. We have shrinking state revenues to deal with. There was a big gap in our budget that we had to fill this year, almost a mil in terms of what the lost revenue was from the state of Connecticut. We're still funding a severely underfunded pension plan, and we're dealing with increasing debt payments from all of our bonded projects. The lack of previous capital investment also required us to get back on track so that we don't get further behind. We funded items based on the 10-year capital plan that was instituted at the direction of the council last year. The council adopted a capital policy, and we believe that our budget follows the policy established and that you approved last July. We focused on items that were identified as essential by the working group, and were heavily concentrated in the public safety area. We also did add several part-time positions to areas that were addressed by in the council priorities. We did add a part-time...or several part-time positions in the social services department and the senior citizen area, and one in the park and recs area, and one in the library. We do understand that tax increases are difficult for all taxpayers and especially for senior citizens on a fixed income. We put forth a budget that I believe is mindful of all the citizens' financial pressures, as well as their desire to keep necessary services in place and provide for the ongoing capital needs of the town. I thank you for the time here, and I hope you have a good time with the budget. I would like to just leave on one item. One earlier person had mentioned that the town...the town's bond rating had been downgraded. That's not correct. And if Mr. Delaney, I'm sure, would give you an update on our bond rating if you so chose.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
The town, for the past several years, has been reasonably active in the bond market. And as a result, every year has sought a rating from recognized bond rating agencies. About three years ago, the decision was made to scale back and only obtain a rating from S&amp;P. Previous to that, we had also obtained ratings from Moody's. Our rating from S&amp;P is AA+. That's one notch below AAA. It is comparable with communities around us. It's a very strong rating. At a recent government financial officers' meeting, the bond percentages for this year's bond ratings across the state were listed, and Berlin was actually the third lowest in the state. So we have a strong rating, and there is an appetite for our bonding. I think what was referenced was, earlier this year, when the state and the city of Hartford were going through serious financial challenges, Moody's performed some macroanalytics, I'll call it. They didn't discuss with communities. S&amp;P, there's actually a call. They have a discussion. They ask questions. Moody's basically looked at if the state budget, as initially proposed, were to be adopted, so the budget the governor was proposing, would it have an impact of more than 10% on the tax base? So assuming you didn't make any cuts, didn't do anything, the governor cut all that money, passed on teacher's pension, and it was just adopted as is, would your taxes go up by 10% or more? If that was the case, then the communities were put on a watch list. It was a hot topic at one of the meetings we had because it would...it kind of annoyed everybody from the financial circles because it ignored the reality that nobody would just pass that on and move forward. And it was based on the possibility of the legislature passing that budget. Obviously, it ended up in a very different situation. So we remain on the watch list. It is because Moody's has retained everybody on that watch list. There were communities that were downgraded. We were not downgraded. We were not on the list to be considered for it. But we do remain on the watch list. But again, I would say AA+, very strong rating, and a history of very low interest rates, indicative of the strength of the community, and that's recognized in the professional circles.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, this whole process is new to us. I think there's been a lot of hard work by everybody. I thank the finance board for getting into the numbers. I don't envy you with that big giant budget book that you had to go through line by line, talk to the departments and spend a lot of time doing it. You know, because this was new, we do have a meeting tomorrow, and I thought we would meet with the Board of Finance to at least talk about things, go over it in a little more detail since we really haven't done that since you proposed the budget. I thought that was the intention because I'm not ready to approve or cut, uh, cut the budget until we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow, and I, I thought that would be the appropriate time to do that.
I disagree.
Okay.
As do I. I thought we were supposed to. If we couldn't come to a decision today, then we had two other meetings that we could use if needed. But based on the conversation during the communication of citizens or audience of citizens, we've had four people speak, three people spoke in favor of the budget.
Correct. There wasn't a lot of people.
Right, but one person spoke against it. I think we should discuss this and have a vote tonight and let the citizens decide ultimately how the budget should go instead of dragging it out.
Well, I don't, I didn't think one more day would, would hurt.
Well, I, I think too that it's important to note that this charter revision was voted on by our voters.
That's correct.
And the Board of Finance was implemented. So the Board of Finance are the experts who in my mind we are supposed to be deferring to. I think this budget is incredibly responsible. Now, mind you, I did not go over this line by line. I wish I had the fortitude and the knowledge to do that, but what I have been presented with, what I have seen, what I've read, I think it's, it's very, very, very responsible considering what's going on economically in the state and, and locally. And I was hoping that based upon all of that, that my colleagues would vote to pass this.
Well, in my first blush of looking at it, I thought it was a little bit too high considering some of the other towns around us. And I thought we would have a, a discussion between the board and the town council to do that a little further tomorrow. You know, one of the comments I heard out there is this was a catch-up budget, you know? I don't disparage anybody for using that comment, but there's been an awful lot of spending in the last few years, especially the last couple, that where items were in the budget, either they were bonded, short-term bonds are in the budget. So, you know, we, we funded fire trucks. We funded the vestibules. We funded the radios and the dispatch center. We did a lot of work. And of course, we live in a time where we can't always get everything we want. So I was hoping that we would discuss this a little more tomorrow, but.
May I, people didn't get everything they wanted. They had cuts. The Board of Education. Am I correct, Jerry? Didn't the Board of Education cut? And weren't there cuts on the other side as well? Yeah. So it's not like they came with a, a budget that's inflated. There were cuts. They made an honest effort. They did a great job.
There were cuts and increases, right? The Board of Ed is still getting an increase this year, correct?
As they should. Should.
I still think a 5% increase for the town in this economic time is a lot.
So I, I just have a feeling we're never going to really agree. So let's put it to a vote and let the citizens decide. Because let's face it, they can go up or down, and shouldn't the citizens have that right? And thank you, Jan, for bringing that up.
Regardless, it's going to go to a referendum. I think it wouldn't hurt to be judicious in the process by having a discussion regarding this tomorrow. I think one day wouldn't really hurt too much, and it doesn't set it back any, any date. The referendum for the vote is still unchanged.
What will tomorrow bring, though? The same discussion we're having right now with probably no change, except maybe if Mark was here, he'd cut some things, right?
Well, I, I don't know if he would have done that tonight. I thought that, that was what the meeting for was tomorrow. Maybe I'm misunderstanding why we had this meeting.
Um, Kate, wasn't it? Can you explain why there's two other meetings? It's not because somebody's not here tonight, correct? Correct. Right. So we should do what we were elected to do.
Well, we're going to have a vote, and it's probably going to be even.
I would think so.
Then we're not going to be able to take action on it, and we're going to have the meeting tomorrow anyways. No, it's a special town council meeting for us. I thought it would. I, I'm wrong. I'm sorry. My, my apologies.
So really?
My apologies. I'll take that back. I'll take that back.
Okay. So Karen can't attend tomorrow night, which means we won't get anything really accomplished, and especially if the Board of Finance is not involved either to answer any questions that we might have.
It's a deadline to get this done. We have to.
Thursday, isn't it?
Thursday.
Which is not going to change.
So in my opinion, I, I thought this budget was too high. And there are things that I thought we would talk about that we could do and then talk with the Board of Finance after that, but we're, we're at a stalemate anyways, no matter what happens. So any more comments?
Peter, did you have any comments?
Oh, sorry, Peter.
That's all right. I, um, this isn't my first rodeo. It's my first rodeo with the Board of Finance, and I'm not afraid to tell you, I was against the Board of Finance in the last charter change. I was, however, pleasantly surprised by the, the thought and the process that they went through to really blaze a new trail for the town. And I attended the hearings. I read everything I read that, that was out there. And my opinion is, is let the voters have it. I mean, that's who we all answer to ultimately. I mean, we all get elected from the people who I want to see vote on this budget. I think we should just send it to the people. Why would we stop a process that allows majority rule? Don't understand it. And especially if it comes backwards, rejected, then what do we do? We've already cut. What do we cut then? Throats. That's what we cut.
Well, I do remember last year, Peter, when there was a last-minute finding of some funds, and we, you know, the small group of people gave it to the Board of Ed. You thought that that was a Democrat budget last year. This year, the budget, budget is a lot bigger. It's a bigger increase. So I don't know where we go from here. You know, do we want to push it to the voters? I hope we have a, a good beating afterwards because I have a feeling this will probably be voted down, and then we're going to have to have honest talks about what we can do to reduce the budget.
And that's the way it should be, right?
So I don't want to belabor the point anymore.
So, question.
Yep.
Proceedually, what, what will we do now? Just take a vote and send it to the?
That's, I mean, that's the only thing we can do here, right?
Yeah.
So.
Then if it's voted down, then we have a joint meeting with the Board of Finance, correct?
Yeah, no.
Well, no.
Tomorrow night is only with the council.
Only with the council.
Tomorrow.
I read this wrong.
And you have to have, you have to make a decision by Thursday.
Yep.
So right now, the two, the two special council meetings are council meetings. One for tomorrow night and one for Thursday.
Right, but if we vote it to go to referendum, it's, it's out of our hands. If we, if we don't vote to go to referendum, then we have a joint meeting with the Board of Finance, correct?
No.
Nope.
The choices are approve the budget, approve the budget with line item reductions, or reject the budget. Okay, if you do one of the first two, it goes to referendum. If you do the third one, you have your joint meeting. And then nine members of that 13-person group have to approve the revised budget. Otherwise, the budget goes to referendum.
Okay.
But it refers back to last year's budget.
Right. It does, which is catastrophic. You know, I think it's really important to reiterate what Jerry said earlier. I mean, there were, you said 20 to 25 votes, all of which were unanimous. You know? What are we doing? We defer to the experts. We defer to the people who thoughtfully, gruellingly went over every single item in this budget. Let's send it to the voters.
Well, we have to vote, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Take the motion?
I'll take a motion. So, discussion, which one, what part do I read here? There we go. Do I read it as stated here? Because it says discussion.
Normally, if you're going to make a motion, you're in favor of it. All right, so I'm going to think out loud that you may vote against this motion. So if that's the case, you should not make the motion.
Okay. But it, okay.
You won't have discussion. You would have.
Right.
You know, you would, the, the motion would be to adopt, or approve, I should say, approve.
So can somebody else make a motion?
Yes.
You could.
It's going to be to approve.
Yeah. Discussion and, let's see. I move to. Okay.
We're going to have to.
You can start with move to approve the Board of Finance recommended.
Right, okay. Move to approve the Board of Finance recommended fiscal year 2018-19 budgets. Forty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars for the, for the Board of Education. Million. I'm sorry, forty-three million eight hundred and eighty-one thousand for the Board of Education and forty-five million six hundred and twenty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-five for the general government.
And move it to, and send it to referendum.
And send it to referendum. Thank you, Kate. Second. Should we finish it?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions?
Should we, should we have a roll call vote so we get a total?
Do that.
That way, there's no question.
I was pretty confident.
All right. Councilor Angelo Cussetson, you're going to vote yes?
Yes.
Councilor Daniele.
No, I can't do this to the people that voted for me.
Councilor Tianoni.
No.
Councilor Aguirre.
Aye.
And Councilor Rosso.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor.
No.
Motion fails as a tie.
So we will meet tomorrow.
We're going on to 11 now?
Yes, the one that was added, we will move to number 11.
Jack?
Agenda item number 11 is the authorization for the acting town manager to subordinate the town's mortgage with respect to 945 Farmington Avenue. That's a piece, it's the property on Farmington Avenue that, that the town currently is responsible for. Chris Edge is here to discuss the subordination agreement.
Sure, we're working with the owners of 921 945 Farmington Avenue. They had gone through refinance. Their mortgage company or their bank had asked us to take a subordinate role. Essentially what this is, this is on the Lubeneak building. We had done a facade grant for it. So essentially, we have a lien on the property for a certain amount of years, and we're just taking, basically still in the chain, but we're taking a step down behind the bank. And this is just a piece that last time, we did the first half. This time, we're doing the second piece. That way, they could do what they need to to help grow the business.
Okay. Any questions for Chris on this item? Hey, we'll take a motion.
Move to authorize the acting town manager to execute the attached subordination agreement with respect to its mortgage on 945 Farmington Avenue, recorded in volume 721, page 1043 of the Berlin Land Records, subject to the review and approval of Corporation Council.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
This is my paper. Okay. What is next here, Jack? The town managers' report? Appointments.
Appointments.
We have a couple here that I'm, I'm interested in getting done tonight out of the way. I have, we have a new one here in front of us for the ZBA, since, start from the bottom up, I guess. Nominate him.
What's number is it?
Oh, this one here. That's the last one. Yep.
That would have been the one that I had.
On our desk, yes.
Number 19.
Nelson Graca.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, just put him back on.
I move to nominate Nelson Graca for the owning Board of Appeals.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'd like to skip over to the Berlin Housing Authority. We have one here. This one here. Yeah, yeah.
Move to approve Joseph A. Pajorski for the Berlin Housing Authority.
Okay, any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The abstentions are nays. And I'm going to hold off on the rest of them. No action for the rest of those. No, some of these are new. Now, we have the town managers' report.
Yeah, the first thing I'd like to do is, I think I had sent you all an email after the fire at 54 Sunmetal Road. I'd just like to bring to your attention that the fire department, the fire marshal, the social services, the police were all very heavily involved with that. It was a, it was a catastrophic fire. And our social services department are working with the residents there to make sure they have housing and, and also there's a young girl involved that, you know, makes, to see whether or not she can, you know, she's probably lost all her toys and everything, so we're trying to make sure that, that the family's being taken care of. But I just want to make you aware of that.
How old was she, Jack?
I'm, I'm, the exact age, I'm not sure. I just know that she's a young, um, hold on. Jan? You know, you know how old the young lady was in the, who was, uh, in the, uh, family lost the house in the fire? I know Doug's working with them right now. Okay, we'll find out for you.
Yeah, because I have two daughters, so I'll see what I can put together if you can get me an age or a size or anything. Thank you.
Okay, the, the next thing, much as you're going through, you know, we're going, you're going through the town budget right now. The Water Control Commission's working through the budget for the Water Control Authority, both the water and sewer. Their rate structures are, are somewhat behind. They have not had a rate increase in several years, so. We've been, we've engaged a firm to do a rate study. We're having a workshop next Monday at 11 o'clock, basically a brainstorming, because they've come back with some information that, that leads us to, it shows that we need to have a large rate increase. And we're concerned that a large rate increase at this point is, as with any other budget thing, is something we want to look at. So we're going to have a workshop next Monday at the, at the community center, 11 o'clock, to basically brainstorm and come up to marry the, the rates with, with the projects and things that need to be done for both the water and sewer. We are, we are involving, so we are getting involved with several projects that you've been, you've approved. Savage Hill Pump Station, we are making arrangements to, uh, we've got the easements in place with a homeowner, so we're going to start that project very shortly, where we're going to lay a new, a new sewer line across somebody's property there. But what that does for, for this Water Control Commission, it eliminates a pump station, so we should reduce their cost long-term. The Belcher Brook Project, we're finalizing the agreements with the state, and that should start very shortly where we start to line that, and that will improve, uh, will reduce the amount of water going into the sewer system, which should reduce our cost. We also met, uh, the group has met with the police department to discuss the Main Street reengineering project. We've been talking with the fire department and, and the businesses on Main Street. We felt it was important to engage the, the police department, so we met with the police commissioners last week and talked about that. Chris Edge was there, along with our consultant Cardinal Engineering. We just laid out the plan, showing them how we're going to rearrange the parking, modify some of the islands, and, and just to get their input, and so far, their input was very favorable. We met with Cardinal Engineering, the Department of Public Works, we're with Cardinal Engineering. We're looking at another grant application through the, the CROG. There's money available for resurfacing or redoing certain roads. The roads that we're looking at, we, we could potentially get enough money to do 3.3 miles of roads. So we're looking at Christian Lane, Demming Road, Burnham Street and Porter's Pass. If you look, it's like one, those roads are roads that are very difficult for us to, to do ourselves. So this money would allow us to, to put together a bid package, bid it out and have a contractor come in and do those roads all in one shot. And it's been quite a while since they've been done. I think if you drive on them, you know they're, they're starting to get to the point where they need some work. It would be better if we could contract that work out. It would be better if we could contract that work out, so we're working on a grant for that. So, that, that pretty much does what I have for tonight.
I had a question about the water. Where are we with the Mattabasset project that we were involved in? I mean, how far, how much longer is the, we had some rate increases because of that, right?
Yeah. That, that, actually, we're coming toward, well, we probably get a few more years on that. I think probably five more year. Kevin, do you know the duration on that? I think we have like five more years of loan payments?
I believe it's all...
Okay. So, we've got a while yet to go on that. Oh, the, one other part that I wanted, did want to discuss with that is, we purchase water from New Britain. We, in that, we can produce water at a relatively inexpensive price. We put a new well in last year in our Elton Road wellfields. By doing that, we don't purchase enough water from New Britain, so we're actually underpurchasing. They have a cap, a minimum amount, that we can buy, and we're actually under that, so we would pay a premium. So, we're working with New Britain right now to renegotiate that rate, so that we could save money there. We're able to actually now get money, get water from MTC, New Britain, Cromwell, in our own fields, which is good. We're diversifying, so in case, in case we have another drought or something, we have multiple areas we can get water from. Cromwell's actually the lowest cost, but Cromwell, because of the pressure they deliver at, we can't purchase too much of it because the pressure's too low. But we have identified several wellfields in Berlin ourselves that we could almost double our production rate if we, if we had development, or if we needed to, so we're in a pretty good position.
Excellent.
Oh, excuse, okay, the young lady was five.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Jack? No? Okay, any special committee reports? I can't think of any.
Karen and Pete and I attended kind of a meet and greet at the Italian Club that Chris Edge and the Economic Development Commission put on. It was sponsored by some local businesses. It was a really nice effort. It was really well-attended, so I just wanted to mention that and thank Chris.
Yeah, I heard that was well-attended. Unfortunately, I was stuck in New York. I couldn't get here in time, so hopefully be able to catch the next one. Okay? Anything else? Okay, Counselor Communications, anything here?
I don't know.
You're good? Okay. We have a couple of meeting minutes here to approve. The first one would be the Joint Board of Finance Town Council Meeting on March 12th. Did I get a motion to accept those?
Is this one here?
Yep.
Move to approve the Town of Berlin Board of Finance Town Council Special Joint Meeting held on Monday, March 12th, 2018, at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any nays? Motion approved? Okay, one more. Town Council Meeting on March 20th.
Move to approve the Town of Berlin Town Council Meeting, Tuesday, March 20th, 2018, Town Council Chambers, held at 7:00 p.m.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, one here?
I abstained. I was not very...
Two. Okay. Motion to move into executive session?
Make a motion to move into executive session.
Who we inviting?
Yeah. It's Personnel Matters, Connecticut General Statute, Section 1-200, subsection 6, subsection A, concerning the appointment, employment performance, and evaluation of a public employee, Town Manager.